Good evening. Before we begin our meeting this evening, Deana Vial, a senior student at Hanville High School, would like to offer a moment of reflection, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Mrs. Melinda Bernard. Please stand.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Dear Lord, I thank you for gathering us all here tonight as a community. I ask that you guide the school board members in their tasks and the decision-making that will be done tonight. I pray that as a community, we all continue to uphold the values of our school system and keep in mind the needs of our students and teachers. Thank you, Lord, for continuously blessing us as a family and community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Deana, for that moment of reflection, and best wishes to you on the remainder of your senior year at Hanville and also in your future endeavors. I understand you're going to attend LSU with a goal to attend law school, so best wishes to you. This meeting of the Board of St. Charles Parish Public Schools for Wednesday, December 12th, is called to order. Good evening and welcome. We have seven of our eight board members present. All board members are present except for Mr. Art O'Quinn, so would ask our board secretary if you would note that for the record. Also in attendance this evening is our superintendent Felicia Gomez-Walker and our board secretary, Mrs. Shelley Babino. The first item on the agenda is item 2.01, Recognition of Christmas Card Winner. The annual Christmas card contest is held for students to compete for the honor of having their design selected as the board's official Christmas card. The 2018 winner is Mackenzie Dufren, a ninth-grade student at Hanville High School. The superintendent and I will now present the framed official school board card to Mackenzie. The next item on the agenda is item 2.02, Board and Superintendent's Recognition. On behalf of the school board, congratulations to the students, employees, and teams recognized this evening. You certainly helped reinforce our status as a AAA district with emphasis on academics, athletics, and the arts, and you -- thank you for setting the bar high for excellence in St. Charles Parish Public Schools. At the conclusion of tonight's recognitions, we'll take a short break for those who would like to leave to do so. Thank you.
Students. High school students were named to the LHSAA All Academic Class Division Team. From Destrahan High School, Ashari Chrisostamo. And from Hanville High School, Lindsay Mathern. Hanville High School students were named to the All District Volleyball First Team. Kristen Crudy, who was also selected as the Defensive Most Valuable Player. Brianna Plazos. And Bailey Rue. School system students were named to the All District Football First Team. From Destrahan High School, J.R. Blood. Quincy Brown. Champ Craven. John Emery, who was also selected as the Offensive Most Valuable Player. Alex Huzard. Carson Ryder. Dontrell Smith. Quentin Torbar. From Hanville High School, Adonis Freelu. Gabe Medina. John Pierre Saul. Jacoby Scott. And Jalen Singleton. School system students were named to the All State and District Honor Choirs. From Destrahan High School, Brooke Jones. Hannah Cook. From Hanville High School, Jason Agregard. School system students were named to the District Seven Honor Choir. From Destrahan High School, Brianna Gilmore. And from Hanville High School, Aijana Cotton. Employees. Destrahan High School employee was named the District Football Coach of the Year, Stephen Robisho. Teams. Hanville High School volleyball team is the district champion. Coach Mindy LaBeauf and all team members, please come forward also. Destrahan High School football team is the district champion. Coach Stephen Robisho, and again, football team members, please come forward. And we have one more student to honor this evening. Destrahan High School student was named to the District Seven Honor Choir, Alexis Ellis.
Again, congratulations to the recipients of the recognitions this evening. We'll take a short recess at this time, and you certainly welcome to stay for the business portion of our meeting, but if you'd like to leave, you can take advantage of this opportunity at this time. Thank you. We'll resume the meeting to cover the business portion of our agenda. First item is item 3.01, Minutes from the November 12, 2018 Committee Meetings and the November 14, 2018 Board Meeting. Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robisho, seconded by Mrs. Smith. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item 3.02, Personnel Items. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December 10, 2018, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's strategic plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the personnel items presented to the Board on Monday.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savois, seconded by Mrs. Bernard. Any discussion on this item? Please cast your vote. That motion passes by unanimous approval. Item 3.03, Equal Opportunity Employment Board Policy 4.01, First Reading. Upon review of Board Policy 4.01, Equal Opportunity Employment, revisions were necessary to align with recommendations developed by the Equal Employment Opportunities Commission. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December 10, 2018.
Mr. President, I move that we accept item 3.03, Equal Opportunity Employment Board Policy 4.01, First Read.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savois, seconded by Mrs. Bernard. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes also by unanimous approval. Item 3.04 is Equal Educational Opportunities Board Policy 1.01, First Reading. Upon review of Board Policy 1.01, Equal Educational Opportunities, revisions were necessary to provide consistency with Board Policy 4.01, Equal Opportunity Employment. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December 10, 2018.
I move we accept the revisions to Board Policy 1.01, Equal Educational Opportunities for First Reading.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bernard, seconded by Mr. Robisho. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes with all members voting in favor. Item 3.05, Bid Acceptance. New Sorpy Elementary School HVAC Replacement. The architect's construction budget for HVAC replacement at New Sorpy Elementary School was $1,600,000. Bids were received from five contractors on Thursday, November 29, 2018. The lowest base bid was received from Mayus AC and Heating LLC in the amount of $1,290,000. According to the engineer, the bid meets all requirements, excepting the lowest base bid from Mayus AC and Heating LLC will allow the contractor to begin the project. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December 10, 2018, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board's strategic plan. Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robisho, seconded by Mrs. Bernard. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I want, just for public knowledge, this job's going to be mostly done in the summer, but some work is going to -- preliminary work is going to be done during the holidays between now and the summer.
Thank you, Mr. Robisho. And again, it's worth noting that this particular bid came in over $300,000 under budget. Please cast your vote. That motion passes by unanimous approval. Item 3.06, Bid Acceptance for the Purchase of School Buses. In a continuing effort to upgrade the parish-owned bus fleet, the Transportation Department requested bids to purchase buses. One bid was received on Tuesday, November 27, 2018. Kent Mitchell Bus Sales and Service Incorporated submitted the bid for one bus equipped to transport students with special needs and one bus equipped to transport Head Start students. This agenda item was reviewed at the Transportation Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December 10, 2018, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's strategic plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the bid with Kent Mitchell Bus Sales and Service INC. to purchase one bus for regular students and other bus for special needs students.
I'll second.
At a cost of $185,765.40.
We have a motion by Mr. Alexander, seconded by Mr. Nakhan. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Let's do a verbal vote. All in favor signify by saying a aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. That motion carries. Item 3.07, Bid Acceptance, Lease Purchase of School Buses. Again, in a continuing effort to upgrade the parish-owned bus fleet, the Transportation Department requested bids to lease purchase buses. One bid was received on Tuesday, November 27, 2018. Kent Mitchell Bus Sales and Service Incorporated submitted the bid for the lease purchase of five school buses. This agenda item was reviewed at the Transportation Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December 10, 2018, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's strategic plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the bid for the lease purchase of the five school buses as submitted by Kent Mitchell.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Alexander, seconded by Mr. Savois. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. I think our electronic program is freezing up, so we'll go ahead and again do a verbal vote on this item as well. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. That motion carries. Takes us to item 3.08, which is Proposal Acceptance, Internet Access, and Wide-Area Network Connection. Proposals were received from four vendors for internet access and wide-area network connection services on Monday, December 3, 2018. Proposals were reviewed and evaluated by committee based on cost, network architecture, support and qualifications, implementation timelines, and prior experience. After scoring the proposals, AT&amp;T is the recommended vendor. The contract is for a three-year period. This item was reviewed at the Technology Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December 10, 2018, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's strategic plan.
Mr. President, I move to accept the proposal from AT&amp;T for internet access and wide-area network connection services in the amount of $203,874.72 annually.
I'll second. We have a motion by Mr. Robisho, seconded by Mr. Nakhan. Any discussion? Are we prepared to try an electronic vote? That motion passes by unanimous approval. Item 3.09, Accounts Payable for the Month of November 2018. Invoices and other financial obligations of the school district are customarily paid weekly. Requests for approval of these transactions is normally made to the Board monthly. The Board must approve expenditures of public funds under its jurisdiction. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, December 10, 2018, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's strategic plan. Entertain a motion?
Move approval of the accounts payable for the month of November 2018 as presented.
Second. We have a motion by Mrs. Bernard, seconded by Mr. Savois, to approve the accounts payable, and the total amount is $3,827,351.76. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes by unanimous approval as well. Item 3.10, Election of President of the Board. Board Policy 2.12, Officers of the Board calls for the election of a president to perform various tasks as defined in official policies of the Board. Board Policy 2- Board Policy 2.12 calls for the election to take place in December, so one of its members will serve for the subsequent year. Conducting an election for the presidency of the Board in December is in accordance with Board Policy 2.12.
Mr. President, I'll nominate Dennis Nakhan for our president in 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other nominations?
I move that we close nominations.
Okay, we have a motion to nominate Mr. Nakhan and also to close nominations and we have a second for that to close. Okay. We're gonna do a voice vote for this item. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We don't. There's only one person in the field.
All right. So by acclamation, Mr. Nakhan, you're elected president of the Board. Would you like to make any comment?
I just want to take this opportunity to thank the Board for the vote tonight and look forward to working with the Board and administration in calendar year 2019. Thank you.
The next item is 3.11 Election of Vice President of the Board. Board Policy 2.12 Officers of the Board calls for the election of a vice president to perform various tasks as defined in official policies of the Board. Board Policy 2.12 calls for the election to take place in December, so one of its members will serve as vice president for the subsequent year. Conducting an election for the vice presidency of the Board in December is in accordance with Board Policy 2.12.
Mr. President, I nominate Sonny Savois for Board Vice President.
A second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robisho, seconded by Mrs. Bernard for the nomination of Sonny Savois for Vice President. Are there any other nominations?
I close nominate, I move to close nominations, for me to say.
We have a motion to close nominations. You can hear a second.
Second.
A motion and a second, so by acclamation, Mr. Savois, you're elected Vice President of the Board.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank the Board for their dishonor of serving the Vice President for the Board this year and also support of Mr. Nakhan as Monday the officer. Thank you.
Moving into closing items, item 4.01 Standing Committee Reports. The Chair of any committee may make a report at this time.
Mr. President, the Personnel Committee and Policy Committee met on Monday, December 10, and we had item 3.02, 3.03, 3.04 that discussed and moved to the board table and we disposed of those tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Savois.
Mr. President, fortunately, I was not able to make Monday's committee meeting and I'd like to defer to Mr. Smith who handled that committee for me.
Mr. President, in the absence of the committed chair, I will make the report by indicating to the membership and to the audience that the Board recommended that all of the items pertaining to capital improvements would appear on the agenda for approval tonight and we want to express our thanks and appreciation to the Board for approving those items.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Mr. President, the Insurance Committee also met. We decided as a committee to move the accident insurance that will be, that will be in an open enrollment in March, Mr. Kane? March, correct? In March. The accident insurance will, will now be handled by Unum Insurance. The critical illness insurance will also be Unum Insurance Company. We have a whole life product that's also Unum and we have a cancer policy will now be handled by... MetLife. No. Yeah, MetLife, I'm sorry. John, Mr. Kane, can you come up to the mic, please, and, and save me here, please?
Good evening.
So, yes, sir, re-explain, so I kind of fumbled that, so just give a better explanation of, of who we are moving to.
Okay. The accident insurance, the critical illness, the whole life policy will all be written by Unum Insurance Company. The cancer and the hospital indemnity policy will now be through MetLife.
Thank you.
Any questions?
That will be at our, the open enrollment.
In March.
In March.
Yes.
I got that right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Robisho. Thank you, Mr. Kane.
Mr. President, the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee also met on Monday, December 10. We had one item on our agenda. It was for committee meeting only. It was a wonderful presentation by Mr. Ronnie Seo, who is the curriculum specialist of our school-to-career program. He gave us an overview of the school-to-career program. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Bernard.
Mr. President, the Transportation Committee also met on Monday night and we had two items on the agenda, the two schools that deals with the purchase and the lease purchase of school buses that we passed both of those bids, accepted both of those bids tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Also, I wanted to report that the Finance and Audit Committee met on Monday, December 10, and we covered one item. That item came to the full Board during this meeting and was approved and that item was the accounts payable for the month of November 2018. Any other Standing Committee Reports? That brings us to item 4.02, the Superintendent's Report. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, first of all, invite the public to tune into Channel 8 over the Christmas break to view the Christmas programs that are hosted by our schools throughout December. These holiday programs feature the outstanding talents of our students in St. Charles Parish. The Channel 8 programming schedule can be found on the district's website and holiday programs can also be viewed on the district's channel on Vimeo, V-I-M-E-O.com. On behalf of St. Charles Parish Public Schools, I would like to wish all the families and members of our community a wonderful holiday season. There will be early dismissal on Thursday, December 20. Holidays will extend from December 21 through January 2, 2019. Classes will resume on Thursday, January 3, 2019. We have accomplished much this past year and we expect to accomplish much next year. We look forward to a successful new year. May all of you have a joyful, safe, and blessed holiday season and a happy, healthy new year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Any other business or discussion?
I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and I move to adjourn for the last time in 2018.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. We stand adjourned.